To share some insight and discover even more ways that we in the diaspora can partner with all our leaders, all our leaders and stakeholders as we work towards continually building Kenya, especially this year as we celebrate 50 years of independence. Traditionally, the diaspora has been a big contributor to the Kenya economy through the money that we send home and we hope to continue to be part of the economic growth of Kenya and the well-being of our families at home. We look forward to a wonderful evening of interaction and discussion with our special guests and I hope you all enjoy this session. I will now call upon our committee chairman, Mr. Sam Osamber, if he is here. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. The immediate former prime minister, the governor, ladies and gentlemen. I'm excited to see very many Kenyans who have come out to interact with the governors today. I know there may be some guests here from out of town or out of state. You're welcome to this session, welcome to Texas. I know that we are going to have a good evening, but before I say much, I would like to acknowledge the committee that has helped us put this together. They are here working back and forth, so some of them are not in here. But just so you know, we are here with Jennifer Odiambo, Ole Tinga Kale, Stanley Kaptain, Benson Kasue. Without them, this would not have been possible. So I don't have much to say, but just to thank you very much for your attendance here today and just to look forward to a successful interaction. Thank you very much.
Over the course of many political events here in the state of Texas, we are very privileged to have various sponsors. In this particular event, we do have the Network for Development of Youth and the summer's Dodge International Program as the main sponsor for this event. However, we should be aware that as other events come down the road, we also do have other people who are interested in bringing not only core governors to the United States, but to the Jubilee governors who are home, so that we can continue this event properly. It is now my distinct pleasure and privilege to invite Mr. Raphael, who is one of our sponsors, to come and tell us, give us a few words.
Good evening, Kenyans. Good evening, fellow Kenyans. My name is Raphael Atore. I'm very excited and really humbled by your presence today. I am the president of Network for Development of Youth Global and we were intending to have so many partners to work with us, but because of their commitments, it is Network for Development of Youth that invited all these people to the United States with a specific kind of agendas that are supposed to be addressed. So it is actually a very important occasion for us as Network for Development of Youth and we are looking forward to getting fruits from this kind of undertaking. We are planning to have this kind of meeting with our governors from Kenya two times in a year and we chose this place to be a very convenient place because we are having statistics that there are lots of Kenyans in Dallas, Texas. Personally, I live in Labok, Texas, that is where I have my second home. My first home is in Uriiri in Migori County. If you reach Uriiri, ask them two names. Ask them for Mr. Project or Mr. Network. They will take you home. So today, I think, is a very grateful day. Actually, what we did this morning is we had... Kenya has a constitution which was made in the style and format of that of the United States. So our aim as a network for development of youth was to marry the two constitutions today under the auspices of the Prime Minister Raila Amolo Odinga. I just wanted to remind you that there is something which is always a common mistake. When somebody is appointed ambassador and he goes to a certain country and becomes ambassador, anytime he is back home, he is always ambassador. When somebody is a minister and anytime he is back home, he is not in office, he is always referred to as minister. Why the hell did you get the name "former prime minister"? There are certain levels which are, if are on you, it is with you till death do we part. So this gentleman will be the prime minister as long as he lives. So it is a befitting honor. Now, coming to real thing that I wanted to address with you is that we have a program for each of the counties that were represented here today and those that are yet to come in our next summit. The next summit will be an expanded one, including the same governors here and the next other batch of the governor that the prime minister will come with and we are looking forward to having a lot of interaction. I'm very grateful that today's event this morning was very successful. We had very distinguished speakers from Texas State University where I'm related and some speakers from Tarrant County who are really very useful and professionals and it was a very, very successful event. So here, as we are, we shall be ready to answer your questions and a lot of interaction will be done. On that note, I would like to call upon Dr. Alfred Mutua to introduce the governors present, so that you can be aware of which governor is here. Dr. Alfred Mutua, come on.
Thank you very much. Before Dr. Mutua comes up, there's been just a slight adjustment, you know, under the chair. He will be introducing the governors momentarily. Thank you very much. Do we have Dr. Walt Huffman with you?
Okay. Huffman was our speaker this morning, but he left for Labok, Texas.
Thank you very much and again, you know, we're gonna have to make some adjustments. Next is Mr. Ole Tinga. If I could please have you come on?
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Joseph.
Hamjambawa Kenya. Bonamume kamenataga kulala. Tikona wa gini hapa. Eh? Eh? Wapigia wa gini kona zanitoka. Sisi watu wa Dallasa tu kage namla. Sinwatu tuna tikoju? Yes, okay. It's my honor, Your Excellency the Prime Minister, governors. It's my honor to introduce to the Kenyan delegation in the diaspora, especially here in Dallas, this fine-looking delegation of honorable governors led by our former Prime Minister Raila Odinga. There you go, okay. His Excellency the Prime Minister Raila Odinga. That's good because I thought everybody was, "Oh, Malala." Kumi, you are with. Thank you. So it's my honor to introduce to you the governors, as I'll be calling them, and I will introduce to you Dr. Alfred Mutua, to introduce to us our guest of honor, Honorable Engineer Prime Minister Raila Odinga. First of all, I'd like to introduce to you, His Excellency, the Governor of Kisumu, we call it United Kisumu, UK, Jack Raguma. My apologies, he's still on his way. He'll be here, okay? The next on the line is His Excellency Sospita Adjamon, the Governor of Busia.
The Prime Minister, the Governors, and dear Kenyans in Dallas. Good evening. Sospita Odekojamong, the Governor, Busia County. It's not the first time I'm coming to Dallas, the second came here in 2006 again. The Prime Minister, Aniri, I think Omege Magalan, we met some of you here. I think it's a privilege and pleasure today to meet you people in this beautiful state. We are enjoying our stay here and we have come to meet with members of Kenya, the diaspora, and those are potential investors and partners in development. And the development we are talking about is for all Kenyans, not for their core leadership because Kenyans voted and we say elections are behind us, the issue is now development. Say that we are taking our role as the opposition and that's where we belong for a very long time. So we just went back home. So we are now keeping the Jubilee government on its toes to ensure that... to ensure that we deliver what the Kenyans want. So as governors, I know you have so many questions that you ask. A lot of it has been propaganda, but we are just starting. If you look at what you have done, we've just... Some of us have had our executive in the office now. That's the first step we are supposed to do. Then the service boards for the counties, we should be recruiting members. Some are doing, some are already finished. Then the chief of SAS are coming in. So there's a lot of... We have not even started work, but you have been told might be A, B, C, D, which you shall be clarifying in due course. So with those few remarks, I say that thank you very much for your reception. At least for the first time, I'm meeting somebody from my red village, called Odiamong Village. She must be somewhere. Where are you? Where is she? Oh, she's there.
Asanteniwa Kenya. Our next governor is His Excellency, the Governor for Kadiado County, Dr. David Gedianye. He is my governor and I have a pleasure to introduce him to you. Wa Kenya hamjambwa. Wa ximiwa waziri mku. Na wa ximiwa magavana ambao mmefika hapa. Fora hakubwa sana. Seku yaleo kuwa na hawa Kenya wote ambao sekutaragia wangekuwa hapa. Na sekku yafraha sana. Na tumai pia nini mmefraha sana kutuona. Ah, osebe. I want to take this opportunity to say thank you so much for creating time to come and be with us this evening. I know life is not easy. All of us are running up and down and I know you're busy out here and I know you have a lot of other things you could be doing and whatever you do, it's always an opportunity cost. And so I know you have foregone something to be here and so I really appreciate and I take cognizance of the fact that you people are truly patriotic and you really want to know what is going on back home. I want to say we are doing a lot of good work back home. Our country is just beginning to see how devolution is going to work. We will be getting into very specific questions and answers later, but I want to say this is Governor Gedianye, the only governor whose county touches on the capital city and also touches an international border. So I'm ready to go. Kadiado is not just about cattle and the Maasai. It's about a lot more things than just that. You know, on the north, we touch on Nairobi and our county touches on Rongai, Kitengela for Nyamachoma. I know you'd miss Nyamachoma, so I didn't mention that, you know? And on the other side, we touch, we are at Namanga, we are looking at how we can expand in the East African community and how we can take on the trade between us and our neighbors. And we are good to go. And my brother, Odiamong, just mentioned what we are doing. Some things have not been moving as fast as we anticipated, but you can be sure, this team is good. This team is good. It couldn't be better. And we will be getting to the specifics later. I'm happy to see Ole Tinga, who just comes from my county, being very active here. So thank you so much. I also came with a member of... An executive county, executive committee member in charge of information, communication, and citizen participation, Ms. Gladys Marima. So we want to learn as much as possible. We've met a number of people and we'll go back and then come back again to try and learn as much as possible and we'll visit many places because we are ready to learn and we are ready to work. Thank you so much. Mna juwa tunasema nini kwa kimasai? Ashé means "thank you". Next is His Excellency, the Governor for the Greater Siaya County, His Excellency Cornell Rasanga.
The Prime Minister, Honorable Raila Amolo Odinga, fellow governors. Wanainchiwa Kenya. Osawreuru. Thank you very much for... Am I so dark?
As has been, you know, typical today, we're having a few technical issues. It is not like our governor is very dark, darker than me. We seem to be having some issues. So clearly, these issues of lights just don't happen in Kenya only. So the lights are back home, Your Excellency, you can go.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. By the way, I'm very proud to be dark. But there was a time that I used to be brown. Now, I have to thank you very much for turning up here in light numbers to welcome us. As you may be aware, devolution has just started to take place. This devolution was supposed to have been there before many of you were born, isn't it? But somehow, it was born halfway, still bath. Still bath is... Yes, so it never took off, but we are happy, we want to nurture it, so that it grows strong. As you have been told, those people who replied when I said "Osawreuru", we normally say that "turu loyo yengo", meaning your home is better than being satisfied elsewhere. And at the same time, they normally say that home is home, isn't it? So east home is the best. So as we are here today, I believe that since we are in our counties trying to make our counties better, we will need your assistance very greatly. In my county, which is Siaya, you know Siaya is the home of your president, isn't it? And you know also that home, Siaya, is the home of the Prime Minister, isn't it? So you can see I'm a great governor. We normally say in Kenya, we normally say in Kenya, that I'm a great governor, but do I say? So we shall be sharing quite more because I think some other parts, some people who come from other parts of Kenya might be interested to know what is it that is in Siaya? That Siaya produces great men, isn't it? I have the secret, I will tell you. Thank you.
Okay. Baro umpo? Upo? Okay. Next is His Excellency, the Governor for Yamira, John Nyangarama. And I would like to urge our governors, please shorten your introductions.
Right honourable Prime Minister Raila Amolo Odinga. My fellow governors, nini wanakenya hamjambwa. Hamjambwa tena. For the sake of time, I think we want to save time so that we can get, you know, enough space to discuss other things when it comes to eat. My name is John Nyangarama and I come from Yamira. I want to take this opportunity to thank you so much for coming to meet with us and we look forward to discussing a lot when that time comes. Thank you.
Asante sana wa ximiwa. Yenjoshunata kasio. Okay, moving on. Our next governor is His Excellency, the Governor for Kisii, James Ngwe, haribu wa ximiwa.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency, the Prime Minister. Wa Kenya hamjambwa. Hamjambwa tena. Aba kusimorambi yamore. Tu yamore mono? Thank you very much. First, let me start, Mr. Prime Minister. I think what they are grappling with here is the normal logic that titles are actually enduring and even when some of us leave as governors, we'll still be called Mr. Governor, we'll not be called Mr. Former Governor. Fellow Kenyans, for us, it is an excitement to be here. For me in particular, from Kisii, I'm extremely excited that I'm here to talk to you Kenyans. For those of you who don't know, Kisii is the land of soapstone. We are the ones who have soapstone in Africa, the best soapstone in Africa. We have many other things. We have everything that you can think about in Kenya. It's the land where it actually rains and shines at the same time. So we have come here to be with you, we have come here to dialogue with you, we have come here to converse with you and we want to listen to you because for me, in Kisii, I would want to tell you that the Kissis who are here, I receive a lot of money from you. You helped me take care of our brothers and sisters and our parents back home and that's the reason why we are here, so that we can talk with you and we in fact tell you that don't only send the money, also come and invest in our own country and our country.
Asanteni sana. Moving forward, it's my pleasure to introduce His Excellency, the Governor for Kilifi, Mr. Kingi.
His Excellency, the Right Honourable Prime Minister, fellow governors, fellow countrymen, we bring you greetings from motherland. Hamjambwa. Kamamliva mbiva. Komajina naito Kingi ni gavana wa countya Kilifi kuli mkuani kouani. Na nayza kusema bila putengisika la putishika koma de gavana mchanga zaidi pekile wanarfe mtoa ani kosoe. Napia hata sarikali lupita neli kuala jivunia sana kuwa waziri mchanga zaidi katika sarikali ya kibaki na wa ximiwa Prime Minister. Na hayote ali fadio kwa sababu ya imani ya wa ximiwa Prime Minister. ya moshimiwa Prime Minister lukuanayo juu yangu. Ni kua waziri wa juu meya yuafika mashariki, history and community. Ni kawa waziri wa mambo yuendeshade uvvi. Pia katia wale maziri wotea rubaini, kuna wakati waziri mkuu. Ali sema kwa mba jaapu mazirini rubaini lakini kuna waziri mwa nyabaini de mnyanguvu ya kupewa wizarambili kwa pamoja. Kwa waka nipatiya wizaraya fisheries, pamoja na industrialization, zote mbili kwa pamoja. Tuna shkuru neo kuja kwenyu hapo kuzungumza waswala nyubani. Kama mbyoavyo historia kule nyubani yatekelezoa. Na safari ya kuandika historia hi, haina haja hata uki kule nyubani. Huku huku mulipo. Muneiza kua katika wa nikishadiwa ile historia mwainandikwa. Kama ma gavana wenzangu ali kuzungumza, ni kwa mba kuna tufauti kubua ya ile Kenya no pita wa kani na hiki ya muntu kona wassasa. Sasa rasili mali inenda katika counties. Zamani ikuwa pako kapige magoti, upige magoti waziri. Do opate pesa, ikiwa rais hatoki katika yango lako bila shaka otabaki maskini. No mana Kenya sehemu za maendeleho, nichache sana lakini ngine zemebaki nyuma. Kuni mpa kumezaliwa ma rais kumeendelea na kuni mpa hakujaza rais kumebaki na katika dyanga no maskini. Na kwa hivo, mofumo huu mpia, umepeana nafasi sawa za county zote arobaeni nasaba. Mana kiile pesa mwenaenda kiamu hiyo hiyo ndio na kuja Kilifi. Hiyo hiyo ndio na ndakana. Hiyo hiyo ndio na ndakachos. Kwa hivo hatu nasababu tena ya kwanini tusilete maendeleho katika sura ya wa Kenya na katika inchie tu ya Kenya. Na muna mchangu mukubua kama wana Kenya kwa kikishakwa mba gurudumo hili la maendeleho. Pia na nini muna eka mko no ili tuliskume kwa pamoja. Kwa haya machache tuna ombea kila lajeri katika hiye inchie ya ugeni, mnyezimungu wa yalie, pato lenu liwe patola ya mukoriye tu ya Kenya. Tuna kivonia sana wa nini kuahuku, nini le mabaroozi wetu. Na kuja kwenu kwa winge hivi kuna nyesha ile kiu ya kuduwa mambo inavodiri kule nyubani. Na bila shaka waziri mkuu Kisimama atawaduza na kuwalisha ya liyota mwana tandeka kule nyubani. Kwa haya machache, mnyezimungu atu bariki sotsi.
Okay. Wanka piwani badu wanaiza sungumza kswaile kama hicho. Asante. Our next governor is His Excellency, the Governor for the Greater Homabay County, His Excellency Cyprian Awiti.
The Right Honourable Prime Minister, Raile Amolodinda. My fellow governors, we want to maintain the Prime Minister because there is not a Prime Minister in Kenya. When the new government came in, there is not a Prime Minister. So the one we have is the one who is here. That's why there is no protocol being bridged. It is right that we call him the Right Prime Minister because there is only one and the one we have. Ladies and gentlemen, as we've been told, my name is Cyprian Achelius Otieno Awiti. The Governor of Homabay. The one and the only, the one and the only bay we have got. We want to thank the Prime Minister and the organizers of this. I want sincerely thank you very much for coming so that we can dialogue with you, can be able to tell you what is happening in Kenya and particularly tell you about Homabay County. Homabay County, as you all know, is one of the richest counties. Yet, the iron is the poorest. I say this because we have the highest potential. Homabay County is home of a lot of things, including minerals, iron ore which you can do a lot of work with. We have the fish. Within the county, within the Nyanza city is, Homabay County has the largest size of the lake, eighty percent of the lake is in our county. Homabay County has large tracts of land already being rivalled by Mutua here in Machacos. Homabay County has the best agricultural products that you can get. And as we come to you, we want to dialogue with you. We want to be able to ask you to come and invest in Homabay County. And the ambassadors, as Bona Kinga just said, so that at least you can be our link between other investors in this part of the world and in Kenya. People like the Prime Minister's work very hard. For us to be able to achieve devolution, it has not come very easy. As you will be aware, he has done a lot of work. This devolution should be dedicated to him. And the only best we can do for him, the best we can do for him is to make sure it succeeds. Devolution is the same thing. It touches everybody. It is the way to develop the country at the moment. As you are all aware, Kenya has been looked at as a developed. Some other parts are lying with a lot of poverty, others are doing very well. So that's why I think in their wisdom, the Prime Minister leading the team, they decided to have this country go in a devolution way. We have up, we have up, we have a lot of problems still. It is not yet achieved. We are going through the problems as well. We want you to pray for us, we want you to help us, identify investors and identify ways and means of doing the best we can and make a difference in our people's life. So ladies and gentlemen, in the interest of time, I just want to leave at this point in time, we will be discussing. We will be here answering all of the questions which I think you do have and we are ready for you. Thank you very much.
Makofi tena. Asante ni sana. Okay. Any one attack our zee wa sungumza? Amna? She don't want? Okay, okay. Tu endelea? Amatu siendelea? Tu endelea? How was it to see endelea? Asante ni sana. Our next is His Excellency, the Governor of Machacos County. Apparently, he is a top performing governor right now. His Excellency Dr. Alfred Mutua. My apologies, I just got informed that Governor for the Greater UK has just arrived. I'd love to introduce him, His Excellency, the Governor Jack Raguma.
Kisumu pa tu you have to add the like. Your Excellency, the Right Honourable Prime Minister, Raile Amolodinda. Brother governors from Kenya, wa Kenya wenzangu, amujambuni. You know Kisumu and Swaile are not. My name is Jack Nyanunguranguma. Mostly known as Jaa. The Governor of Kisumu County. And you know, the position of Kisumu is right in the heart of the former Nyanza province and the Great Lakes region, if you may remember. So his positioning is not by mistake, is going to dictate a lot of things in the counties. For now, it's sufficient to say that we are happy that you have come out in your large numbers so that we can share together, think through and decide what we can do for our counties. And by your show of presence, I want to believe that you are equally interested in making a difference in the counties that you come from. And for that, we are very, very happy indeed. Because I know we will speak more, I will stop there. But I want to encourage you that as you are leading in remittances, you know, today, the Kenyan economy is driven by, to a large extent, by remittances from diaspora. Yeah, and to that extent, we have been debating that is that remittance for development or is it for transfer, economic transfer? And we want you to change course so that then in the future, remittances now that you will bring will create greater productive capacity. Capacities for the counties that you come from, for Kenya as an economy, so that we can change the lives of our people. That's our desire, that's our hope, but it is also my prayer. I thank you.
Thank you very much. We have in the house one of our Busia County Executive, Hilari Mohulu. He's a County Executive, Tourism, Trade and Corporate Affairs for Busia County. Can you please stand and say hi? One second.
With your permission, Mr. MC, I would like to introduce my Economic Advisor, Mr. Wenchari Kenani. Wenchari, if you can stand up, please. I would also want to introduce the Director of Medical Services for the County, the one in charge of Kisii Hospital and all the hospitals in Kisii County, Dr. Otum.
Just a few housekeeping issues. We have about six hundred Kenyans outside. It is a situation that just came up to us, so that, you know, we know. We might need to take a break and make an adjustment here. But we are liaising with the Fire Department, you know, of Las Polinas to make sure that the meeting is not shut down. So bear with us, should it come to the fact that we are taking a break, we will do that. We want to ensure that, you know, we comply with the law here so that we also give other Kenyans a chance to come in. Again, there will be other meetings, you know, elsewhere. And in the interest of time, at the very worst case scenario, which is what I always deal with, we will run short of time and at that point in time, the management here will invite us to leave. So we are very limited with time. I want to apologize for all the governors who are here. I am cognizant of the fact that we have staff members that came with the governors. I am going to ask each and every governor to just give us some time and not introduce them for now. We will recognize them at the very end of the meeting. And I will, as an MC, try everything within my human confines to accommodate all the officials who are here. We are aware of that, so let's please move along. Along that note, the seat here is for Governor Anob of Trukana. Apparently, in the Kenyan style, everybody downstairs is claiming to be the Governor of Trukana. And the Governor of Trukana indeed is downstairs. So I have despite people who can make positive identification of the Governor of Trukana. And the next person who will be sitting next to the Prime Minister will indeed be the Governor of Trukana himself. Thank you very much. Mr. Olutika, come on.
Asante ni sana. Again, before we move on further, I would like to introduce to you and make you aware that we have the Chief of Staff for the Greater Homabay County, Isaac Abuya. Please, can you say hi? Thank you. Our next guest is His Excellency, the Minority Leader of House, Jakayo Medewo, please.
I am not, I am not Jakaya. I am Jakoya. But I wouldn't mind being a Jakaya in the future. I've been asked to introduce Peter Kahula, who used to live here in the US but now is a World Representative in Homabay County. He left New Jersey and went and contested, so he is now one of our local ethnic. I'm also there with personal assistant to the Prime Minister, Elliot Owalo. They are, they are they were forgotten or they would have been forgotten. I am Jakoya Medewo. I am a member of Parliament for GEM in Siaya County. I am also the Deputy Minority Leader in the National Assembly of Kenya. Asante ni sana.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to announce that we have Chief of Staff for Nyamira County, Professor Kennedy Oganga. And you say hi, please. We also have a leader of majority for Nyamira County, Berita Omanga. Thank you. All right. It's my pleasure now to introduce His Excellency, the Governor of Machacos County, Dr. Alfred Mutua, who will introduce His Excellency, the Prime Minister of Kenya. Amjambu. Ajiwa kua jambu lakushangaza. Yamasikia ndugiangu Kingi ya kiongiya ksweli kama hicho. Alakwa na jiringa kidogo na ksweli. Moana nginue nyume kumbo na mumbozi. Mukatafanika lakini musikuwa na shaka. Sisi tongea kuluki ya kingeresa. I want to start by telling you a short story. I won't speak for very long. A brother left Kenya to come to the United States on holiday. And he had a cat he loved very much. And he left the cat with his younger brother. And he came to the US to it and then he called home after a few weeks and talked to his younger brother at home and said, "Bro, how is the home?" The brother said, "Home is good." "How is my cat?" Because he loved the cat. The brother said, "The cat is dead." So the brother was to it and said, "You know, we are Africans. That's not how you break bad news." The first time I called, we should have said, "The cat climbed up and on a tree and it is stuck on the roof." Then the second time I called, we say, "We called the fire brigade. They were trying to remove the cat, but the cat has gone from the roof. It was stuck on the roof, but now it is on the tree." It was stuck on the roof, but now it is on the tree." On the third day, you say, "They were trying to move the cat. It's lit. It may anguka, it may umea, but it has been taken to hospital." The fourth day, you say, "The cat is in ICU." And then the fifth day, you say, "Oh, we have lost the cat." So the young brother said, "No, I'll never do it again. I'll do it properly." So the older brother said, "Yeah, you need to learn these things, but anyway, it's only a cat. Is everybody at home okay? How is mom?" And the brother said, "Mom is stuck on the roof." You know, that story comes to mind when you always question ourselves. For many years in Kenya, we had leaders come to the United States, go to England, to the developed world, and when they went back home, they were somehow unable to transform home to be like what was here. It was lost in translation. It was like that message of the cat is stuck on the roof. What we saw here, they were unable to translate and take home. But I think things have changed completely. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to salute our Right Honorable Prime Minister. I want to correct our host, who say that he will always be known as Prime Minister. I don't think he will, because once he gets another title, he'll always maybe be known as President Raile Odinga. My fellow governors, there are very many things happening at home. We are in a transition. Things are changing very fast. It is no longer business as usual. It calls for a new strategy in the way we do things. It is quite ironic that we are still stuck in a very, very bad age when it comes to development, but even of greater irony, are the contradictions that we face. You call home today, and your grandmother answers the phone using 21st century technology, and you ask her, "Grandmother, where are you?" She says she's at the river drawing water using primitive technology. A contradiction in life. But these are the things that now we'll have to change, because it is wrong for a child to be born in the United States with only one life, and to live a better life than a child born in my village in Mukambani. Yet, once you go, you don't come back. We have to change the way we do things, but change has come to Kenya. I'm very, very happy that things are changing very fast. From Mandera, all the way to my friend in Shamahoho. From a great Kisumu, you know, I heard them calling it Kisumu Dallas. To Mount Kenya, you know, a top mountain. From a great land in Kissim, where Matoke Falls, to where I was born, in Mukambani. And you know, in Mukambani, the whole of Kampas, you ask them where they come from, they say, "We have Long Dallas, Texas." So I feel that I'm at home. Change has come to Kenya, and now we'll have to speed up the way we do things. In Machakos, for example, we are not taking any time. We are moving fast. We have about 200, 300 years to catch up. So while others all over the world are moving at a certain speed, we realize we have to move even faster. We have big dreams, but we have action. Take note, if you want to know what's happening in Machakos, this is the commercial break. Log into www.machakosgovernment.com, and you'll be able to see what is happening. I don't have a link for Cobra Squad yet, but on that page. I met the Prime Minister, the first time I met him, in terms of working with him closely, I don't know whether he remembers, were inside an old aircraft called a Buffalo, it's a military aircraft, who were flying with him to Mandera and Garissa with the President on a tour. At that time, he was the Minister for Roads, and had just been appointed the government's spokesperson. And we spoke a lot, and one of the things that I liked about Raile Odinga is his humility. He's a very humble man. He talks to kings the same way he talks to people who sweep toilets, with great humility, because he's a great leader. But he's also a man who transcends history in its own way, because he's lived a mighty life, and he's going to live even a mightier life. And I always, I'm very happy when I'm associated with him, and we work together, and we know that if it was not for Raile Odinga, we would not have counties today. We would not have Kenya. My fellow Governor of Makoweni, Kivuda Kibwana, Professor put it very clearly the other day. We wasted 50 years, which we experimented in Twak. Kenya is only left with devolution. If devolution fails, there will be revolution, and we cannot afford that. But we know to the Prime Minister, we will always succeed. Ladies and gentlemen, let's be upstanding to welcome our leader, the Prime Minister... I was a civil servant, now I'm a politician. Just, you know, I'm a coffee lover, I'm not here. Just, he, eh, you can't understand, he's a neshi, he's a neshi, he's a neshi, he's a neshi, he's a neshi. He's a pig, he's a panda, more than a cub, is he, you know? Ah, twenty, 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 panua, 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 panua. Karibu, 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 zizi, 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 zizi. Welcome, sir.
Ayah, 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 ayah. For Kenya, I'm Jumbo. I'm Jumbo Tena. Asante Nisana. Now, you know, when I hear, see Alfred speak, then I know I feel very thrilled, that you are right to make him the government's spokesperson, because he speaks with authority and with a lot of humility. I saw the other day when I was going to the airport, someone else speaking now as a government spokesperson. But he was bucking. And I said, "Even if you want to convey a message to the Prime Minister, can you get somebody who is a little bit refined to speak to the Prime Minister?" You have to get someone to compete with another animal in terms of talking to the Prime Minister, and in a breed of brat, to talk to the Prime Minister. Now I just wonder, what, each one is digital and each one is analog? Isn't Mutua analog? Is he analog? Is he what? So he's a digital. And then the other ones who came after us are the ones who are now analog. But ladies and gentlemen, we are very happy to be back to Dallas, Dala. And as you see, I've come here with a team of governors, who are elected popularly by the people of Kenya. The people of Kenya voted overwhelmingly for change and for devolution, and that's the reason why you said that the devolution might succeed. And if you want to know that the people of Kenya still think devolution, just look at what's happened in Makweni just the other day, yesterday. Make no mistake, the campaign in Makweni was about devolution, because we lost a senator, Senator Mutula Kilonzo. And we went there and told the people that Mutula Kilonzo stood for devolution, and the senator you're going to elect here is the one who's going to defend your governor, who's going to defend devolution. Therefore, if you vote for Mutula Kilonzo Jr., you're voting for devolution, and you saw the results. The writing is all over there in the world for anybody to read. The reason why is because the people of Kenya have sensed the danger. Everybody now knows that devolution is threatened. During the campaign, you kept on telling the people that there are those wolves who are dressed in hyenas, in the sheepskin, those who are today preaching devolution, but don't want it. This is the people who actually were opposed to the new constitution, who spread all sorts of falsehood against the new constitution. Oh, he katiba ni mbaya sana, ekepita, ati shamba zote zitanda. He katiba ekepita, ati wanahume tatoa mimbahovi hovi. He katiba ekepita, wanahume tawana wanyeku wanyeku. Do you remember all those? Those are all propaganda, but more importantly, that these people did not want devolution. And that's the reason why they are doing everything possible to try to undermine devolution. You know, in the new constitution, there's a provision to restructure the system known as the provincial administration. It says clearly that within five years, the system known as the provincial administration shall be restructured to make it comply with the new devolved system of governance. Restructured, not renamed, restructured to fit it in. But what have they done? They have renamed it, but even trying to make it stronger, because they have come up with an animal called county commissioner. County commissioner, where there's a governor. Then down there, you still have, there was a district commissioner, now they've renamed them Deputy County Commissioner. Then you have got Assistant County Commissioner, that's the DO. Then the chief, then Assistant Chief. So you have got, the governor must also have somebody at the district level, the division level, at the location level, and at sublocation level. So you're going to have two systems, parallel systems for administration, a recipe for chaos. This is what they're trying to do. And then they have again resurrected the PC at this level here, up here, the PC, but then in the name of county, I know, Regional Commissioner, Representative. Now what you're being told is that without a provincial administration, there will be chaos in the country. In this country where you people live, do you have a provincial commission?
No.
Do you have a PC?
No.
Do you have a DC?
No.
Do you have a DO?
No.
Do you have a chief?
No.
Or Assistant Chief?
No.
And is there chaos here?
No.
So I've been telling them that even England, where the system came from, they don't have provincial administration, but there is order in England. So you say that, "Let us do with the people who are elected." We never have governors who have been elected by the people. Allow the governors to form the government below them. You can have a DC, and a DO, and a chief, but let them all answer to the governor, not a permanent secretary in Nairobi. So these are people who are actually anti-form and anti-change in our country. So there are two forces which are fighting right now in Kenya, pulling in two opposite directions. The forces for reform and change, as has reported, for retention of the status quo, okay? You look at the police reform. We say that, "Look, let us reform the police force to make it a pro-Pibb police force. Let us remove this colonial mentality." The colonialism that created a police force which is anti-Pibb. The police system is used to oppress our people. So the people fear the police. People don't volunteer information to the police in Kenya, because that's how they were trained, to rule the natives, to oppress the natives. And that mentality has remained. In Tanzania next door, they have reformed the police force, so that when police comes to you, it's a salus, and they say, "Do our mission, wa, tava dal na ombe nikushik." Oh, this one. Oh, you obviously saw anti-Pibb. If you are in London and you are lost, the first person you go to is a policeman, even this country, send it. In London, they're called the bobbies. When you go to him, you ask him, "Excuse me, can you show me the road to Charing Cross?" "Oh, Charing Cross, yes." Take a taxi, drop at Point A, walk straight home, turn left, then another 100 yards, turn left, right, you can't miss it. Then you say, "Thank you." Then you say, "Thank you, sir," and salutes you. And the contrary, in Nairobi, if you get lost and you go to a police officer, he'll find you. Kaluleni, he looks at you like this, "Eh, wapi kitalblisho." He'll find you, ask you to pay for kitalblisho. "Wuna kitalblisho?" Next thing is you have handcuffs, pingo, in a pingo. You find yourself handcuffed, you find yourself in a police cell, tomorrow you are in a court. Charged with loitering with intention to commit a felony. That is how the Kenya police still operates, very much anti-Pibb. That's why we introduced the police reform laws, and we said that the police officers must be vetted, senior officers. And we established the Police Service Commission and the Police Oversight Commission, and gave them more powers, and created the position of Inspector General of Police, who is subservient to the Police Service Commission, so that the powers of recruitment, of promotion, of transfer of senior officers vest in the Police Service Commission. Now, as I'm talking to you, just this week, they brought an amendment to Parliament, it's now before Parliament, which is again removing all the powers from the Police Service Commission and vesting them in the Inspector General of Police, just like the former Commissioner of the police. So we are actually going back to where we came from, going back to where we came from, trying to entrench these powers in the hands of one person, so that impunity will get back. That's why I'm saying that there's actually right now a serious struggle between the forces for change versus the forces for retention of the status quo. It's now out there in the open. But we must continue, because the changes were not brought by those people. The changes were... The changes were brought by the people of Kenya through a struggle. That struggle must continue. So we must give the governors teeth, must give them the power. Because there's no point in somebody going to campaign to be elected in a whole county. Like right now, Mutula Kilonzo got 163,000 votes. And then to come and be there without any powers. The governor was given all those. And then you bring out somebody appointed from Nairobi as a county commissioner and with more powers and more resources than the governor. The governors must have the resources to be able to provide the services. What one inch you want, and their services should be provided. And this must be done in an equitable manner. Power, they are mainly discretionary with powers which have been being exercised from Nairobi are the ones which are responsible for an equal development in our country. They go to some places, Tamak Road everywhere. And they go to some places, children have never seen Tamak Road. They grow up until they're 20 years, have to come to Nairobi to see a Tamak. So that is what we must change. So we cannot now change that, say that, oh, governors cannot yet now be able to construct roads because there's no capacity. Transfer capacity there. I was minister for roads. I know that it is possible right now to decentralize and take the units to the counties. Because there's nothing else. But constructing roads is done by contractors. The governors can award tenders to contractors to do roads. You don't have to return money in Nairobi that, oh, they have no capacity. Give them capacity, and they can be given capacity to do it. Mutua can do it in Masaku. He already has got a very good strategic plan for Machakos. Nonyagarama can do it in Nyamera. Kenge can do it in Kilifi. Oyavong, Nanok, awitie only mbiobse. There are people with knowledge and with capacity to do a lot of things. So this is why we have come here. This is the first team that have brought here. The first team of governors, others are going to come. And to come and learn and see how a devolved system of government works here, practically in the United States. To hear it from the horse's mouth also. So this is the reason why this is being done. It is not a joyride. They have not come here for a holiday, they have come to learn. And at the end, I want them to say that we came, we saw, we did not conquer, we learned. So I'm bringing to you greetings from other leaders of our movement. Honorable Kilonzo Mosioka. Honorable Moses Betangola. That is called. So we want to also call people, saying that, are you called it? This is a question that, are you called it? You are called, and when you say called, you say tukotiyari. Means that you are ready. Are you really ready? Mukotiyari? Called? 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 That is the correct call. So I'm very happy, ladies and gentlemen, you back to Dallas here. I don't want to bore you with a very long speech. I want you to ask these people questions so that they can answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Your Excellency, Prime Minister of the Republic of Kenya and our very next president of the Republic of Kenya. We will now take a cue from the Prime Minister and follow what he has asked us to do, which is go into a question and answer session. We want to learn and hear from the governors what they have in store for us in Kenya. And the governors also want to hear from you, what suggestions that you have. Clearly, time is not on our side, and we could be here all night, and still we would not be able to answer all questions. And as I said before, we have structured this in about maybe six parts: economic, governance, ICT, and security. And so what we will be doing is we will be taking questions on specific topics. You have about 30 seconds to ask. I will give you the microphone, I will give somebody a microphone. They will ask a question. The question can be structured in one of three ways. You can ask a specific governor a question. You can ask a general question, which can be answered by any of the governors. Or you can ask, hopefully, the Prime Minister a question. So without further ado, hold on please. Governor Mutua has given me another suggestion, which I must say that I've forgotten. We will be taking these questions in a group. We'll take five questions, they will answer them. Then we will take the next set of questions and we will answer them. So I guess I'm going to suggest six questions, so that we have three from here and three from here. So if I could please have someone help me move the podium so that we can see all the governors, because apparently the others are behind. Lucy will have the other microphone. Now, she might look nice, and yes, she is nice. And all that will change if you try to hold her microphone. So she will give you the microphone, and you will ask the question, and then it will be answered. We are going to try to move this microphone, I mean this set all the way to the other side. Okay? I clearly do not want to block one of my favorite governors here. Handsome group of men and a beautiful woman, wouldn't you like to say? We will now have the first question. And what I will do is... Can you hear me at the back? Okay. I will take it. So we need three questions from here, and we will start with the economy. Question number one, can you? You have about 30 seconds.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Yenye Umganga. I'm a Prime Minister, I have a question. We are thinking many people in the diaspora and all over the world are worried. Were you really an equal partner in the just past regime? Because we have seen where the other partner is being protected, everything is against you. Were you really an equal partner who let you tell us what happened when you signed into pact? That one is a question that is disturbing me and how we're disturbing others. Second question.
Thank you very much. We are only taking one question. And I must tell everyone, at this point in time, we are taking questions based on the economy. So let's stick to this, and believe me, I'm going to be very strict. We will get the question, give the mic to the lady in yellow. No, you can ask any questions, but we want to maintain a certain structure here. And the structure that has been agreed by the committee is that we will do topical questions. At this point in time, we bring economic questions, go ahead.
Mr. President, I mean, uh... Honorable Prime Minister and respectable governors, my name is Jane Abiambo Chiroma. I'm a student at Stellenbosch University, South Africa. I'm coming here to do a conference in University of Colorado. I'm a PhD student in education. And as we speak about economics, I think education plays a very big role in changing all these things. And as I see politicians speak, as I see leaders speak, and even in the conceptualization of policies in Kenya, education is really not touched so much. So my question goes, how do you intend to educate citizens so that they can be able to be democratic citizens? So that as you lead and as you conceptualize education, our people will be aware? Because it's this awareness that is missing.
Thank you very much. We'll take the next question from this side, sir. Can we please be very brief and precise and be mindful of other folks? Second question, please. She will hold the mic for you, sir.
Thank you, my Prime Minister, my name is Lady Afrika Sulu. My question is this, on issues of investments. There are areas and spheres where there will be conflict between the central government and the involved governments. If we want to invest in opportunities, who do we deal with? Or will our investment, the other question?
One question, please, thank you very much, appreciate it. Second question, question number three. Can you please give to this gentleman here, and then we'll come to the back, I promise you. Yes? And if we could, please have you move to the side, this way we can take these questions quickly. Go ahead.
My question is to the governors. And my question, my name is Pira Mwosofa, I'm from Kigbu. And my question is, as you realize in your states, the problem of healthcare and education is in the growing state. Now, and these are inequality of district. As I give you example, when I go to Karugu or to Kigbu, there is very different education system there. It is not equal to the one in Kigbu, which is Savarfo City. How are you trying to bring equality in education and healthcare?
Thank you very much. Was that a question to the governor of Sulu? Governors as a whole, thank you very much. Okay. We will take a question from the back to gentleman in glasses, please. No, the gentleman, at this point in time, I'm going to show that you know, no, the gentleman at the back in blue in glasses, I'm sorry. That would be you. We're shifting this side, we are encouraging gender equality here also. If we could please have another question from anyone, go ahead. No, this is the decision that we make, we are not going to have people holding the mic. Thank you, go ahead.
My name is Moses Afaswoneke, I come from Kigbu to Masafa. And I think my governor now is Mr. Nyagaram. I haven't met you, but my question is this. In Kis in the general, as our governor, Mr. Ngwai, the education has gone so slow since when we check on the results over here. They always come to last. So what steps are you trying to make so that you can change the Kis community to be part of Kenya? Because economically, we will go down without this education, pick up lifters, and start to stand.
Thank you very much. We will take one more question, the gentleman in red. Then we will have one more question from the lady, thank you. Excuse me, have we had four men? I believe we've had a lady ask a question here. And I'm only human, please correct me.
Hello, I greet you all, the governors and the Prime Minister. My name is Pira Mwanga from Kis County. My question is regarding the economy. We have some potential investments you can make in Kenya. And Kozak City is one of them, and in Nairobi, flying plots. I made some investments like that, and unfortunately, somebody went and started building on that plot. So how can we be sure that our investments are successful?
Thank you very much for having the lady here again. And after this, we will be taking responses.
My name is Jane, and most of us that come here do nothing. Is there a way that constructed, like an assapartitioner or physician assistant, is there a way to pass this thing in the parliament?
Thank you very much. And we'll get one more question from you, and then we will go.
Hello?
Just take it, take it here.
In this panel, from the beginning to the end, I'm only seeing gentlemen, except for one lady. I'd like to ask and suggest and actually request that we become very intentional in promoting the women into positions that would encourage the women to be engaged and involved in the development of our community.
Thank you very much. We will now have a response from the governors. Is there any governor who would like to begin? We had a question about education in Kis. We have a question about plots. We have a question about nursing, you know, nursing practice in Kenya. I'm very proud that the first person who stood up here, I'm not biased, is my governor, Governor Ngwai.
Thank you very much, MC. I will answer the question that related to health services and education in Kis. I think it was asked by the gentleman over there. Now, I'll start with health services. And I think when I'm talking, I'm also talking for Governor Nyagarama, unless he also wants to talk after that. Now, we start with health services, what we've done. And I've been having dialogue with Nyagarama on this. First is Kis Level 5 Hospital. Kis Level 5 Hospital is an hospital that is taking care not only of Kis County, but of Nyamera, of people that come from Migori, even from Omabe, and some from Transmara, which is a part of Naro County. You're talking about Kis itself is a population of 1.2 million, Nyamera is about 400,000, and the other counties. So you're talking about an hospital that is extremely congested and takes care of a population of about 3 million people. So what we've done is have had dialogue with the university, Kis University, and we have agreed with them that we open, we upgraded to Level 6. And we have a teaching, and it becomes a teaching and referral hospital. We have already finalized a county bill to make it a teaching and referral hospital. We have finalized the memorandum of understanding with Kis University, and even the bill we made it together with Kis University. So, and that is why I've come with the Director of Medical Services here. So that we can get, because to get that hospital into a teaching and referral hospital, you need not less than 5 or 6 billion shillings. And that's why we've come here, so that we can talk to you people, you help us, we see whether we can get partners. But that's not all. Moving very, very quickly, we are saying the other hospitals in the sub-counties in the various constituencies must also be upgraded from being dispensaries and health centers to Level 4 hospitals, so that they can decongest the teaching and referral hospital. Turning to, and also the improvement of the supplies, medical supplies, which are now under us, and also in the area of staffing, employing more people in those centers, so that we can improve health services. But even much more than that is a movement away from curative services to improvement of preventive services, so that people don't go to hospital in the first place. Now, on education, we are having discussions, and we have now got a... and we have now got a committee of the various partners in education. You're talking about teachers, you're talking about sponsors, you're talking about ourselves, you're talking about the parent associations. And we have put together a committee for a major educational conference in that region, so that we can find out where a Kisim child who is actually studying in Western can be number one. But when that child is studying in Kisim, they can never be number one. You can never read about them in the papers. So that dialogue is going on. We are going to invite you come to Kisim, so that you tell us what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor Ngwe.
Thank you very much, Governor Ngwe. In Nyamira, I do not want to add anything on education, because that's the way we're moving. We are thinking of raising Nyamira District Hospital to Level 5. And at the same time, the hospitals and dispensaries are so poorly equipped. We have had a fortune, and we have discussed with the people from China. And they have agreed to bring machinery to Nyamira. That is the district hospital or referral hospital. We did install, and the money, revenue will be generated from the people who will be using those machines, and then we should pay back over a period of time. So I think even in the smaller, in the other areas, the small dispensaries, and as we are talking now, our, the gentleman in charge of health services, the director of health services, is making arrangements to go to China for three weeks also for a training, so that he equip himself with the knowledge of coming to deal with those machines that are coming. Thank you.
Governor Mutua has something to add.
We're doing it a bit differently in Matalos. And this is because we want to work with smaller pieces that add up to the big piece. We don't want our patients to get to the referral hospital. We take care of them before they get very sick, which is, I think, the same thing that you're trying also to do. We are improving maternity healthcare and expanding. The WHO, which is what the American system operates, says there should be a community hospital within 5 kilometers. There is a hospital that has a mini theater, has a lab, has, you know, all the basics. So that in case there's an accident, or a woman needs a surgery, it can be performed at the village level. So we've put in 300 billion in my budget for this year to upgrade all health centers within a radius to this year of 10 kilometers, so they can have a mini theater and be able to provide those things. The other thing is also access to the hospitals using ambulances. In Mukambani, women who are giving birth actually rush to the hospital using a wheelbarrow, because there are no ambulances. So we've put in money to buy, by September, an ambulance for every location. So no woman will be carrying a gander. So these are the things, some of the things that we're doing in terms of, of healthcare. It's also the issue, just to add on, of security. Here, you know how you run the police system. What you're also doing is that at home, we keep the police symbol. And I say, managari, amana yemi, mafuta. Your project, na ajah. We put in money, we are going to buy two police vehicles for every location, and a motorcycle, and we fuel them and we repair them. So that now, when you call the police, they are able to come. So we're looking at the small, small bits on the ground, hoping that eventually they change the bigger picture. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is our governor Owizi. You know who definitely also wants to add something about more.
Health is key, and I think I just want to add to what my colleagues have said. In Omabe, we are the worst health indicators. I've just taken over, and have the worst health indicators. Whether it is maternal mortality deaths, whether it is infant mortality, child mortality, HIV infection rates very high. In one place in my, in Omabe, when the, the national figure is 6% for HIV/AIDS, in one place it's 27%. So you can see, so what we're doing, we are working with various, with development partners. We just engaged discussion with UNICEF. They have promised me, and we have worked with them, they've agreed to work with me to make a difference in that area completely. And I've been told that they're already posting Dr. Rinda was working with UNICEF, to work with us with a view to looking at issue of health. Because it's so serious, and so we need quick, 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 uh, it needs quick addressing. We have to address it very quickly. The other area that also brings the issue of health is water. Because you must have, people must have, must have access to clean water. A lot of diseases are waterborne diseases. We are also working with UNICEF and the, and the FID. We have already had meetings with them, and we are going to address issue of water. And ensure that at least every center should have clean water that people can access. The last one I want to talk about is the women that was asked. The constitution requires that, whatever you do these days, if I was appointing 10 government ministers, three must be women. So that at least three, at least three must be of the gender, okay? That has been, has been, uh, been, been, uh, been put in the constitution. And you cannot do anything, even if you're a meeting, and you don't have the other gender, three, then that meeting cannot be a serious meeting as it were. So I think that issue of the women empowerment is on. And in, in our, in our program, women and youth is a major focus area. Because 60% or 70% of our population in Omabe are youth. And their youth were educated and unemployed. Therefore, it's a time bomb that must address as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we're gonna have a response from Governor Both of Siaya. And Governor Adombe, I'm not picking on you. We are going to try to limit the response to about maybe one and a half minutes, so that we can move on. Please bear with me. Thank you.
Okay. For Siaya, I know it would be also wondering whether we have some programs. It's important to note that Masenu University has began a program in Siaya District Hospital for medical, medical faculty. So that from September, we are going to have Siaya District Hospital, Sia County is now Sia County. Having doctors training there to provide medical services to all the cases that we provide there. Another important milestone is that there is an American-sponsored hospital in Kuala known as Matibab Foundation. It is also important to note that it is also getting a lot of referral. It's getting a lot of doctors from, from America here and helping us. And Bono Hospital is also going to, we are going to make sure that it's also given a referral hospital Level 5, Level 4 rather. When it comes to education, it's unfortunate that education was not evolved. But we are trying as much as possible to make inroads into it, so that we address the problems of education as it were, so that Siaya will be back to the top. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Governor. Next, we will have Governor Nguna. Then we will get a response about plots in Kenya.
I think we have given responses on a number of things, but I want to, there's one being omitted here. Another young man asked to whether we are providing protection for investments. And I want to put it like this, in Kisumu, what we are doing is that we are doing a comprehensive development plan from Kisumu, which incorporates GIS mapping of all the properties in the country Kisumu. And by the end of it in September, it will not be possible for you to produce another tattooed on top of another. We will be able to monetize our resources from the comfort of our offices. The other thing that I wanted was, we, we talk about health, but we must also then talk about the environment. And I know we, my brother here talked about water. As you know, Kisumu County is home to very many rivers flowing into the lake Vitoni. Unfortunately, the pollution load that they bring into the lake is one of the worst kind. And we are working closely with the Lake Basin Commission, together with the Ministry of Environment, to, to do a cleanup of the lake, so that we can, we enhance the, reduce the mortality rate of our people. As you remember, people in Kisumu, on average, die at age 48. The national average is 60. So it is a concern. It's a concern for me, and I'm sure it's a concern for many others. I know I would have talked about ambulance services and, and focus on prevention rather than curative. We are focusing on Level 1, 2, 3, so that we reduce the number of people going to Level 5 and 6. And we are also equipping Level 5 and 6, as you may remember, that the former Niunyan General Hospital serves even Kisim, even although Kisim has a Level 5 facility. But it's now been converted into Jaramo Gogingwadinga Teaching and Referral Hospital. It is working with, with Masenu, it is working with Uzema, and it's working with one another, so that then at the end of it all, it becomes a major teaching and referral hospital.
Thank you, Governor Nguna. Next, we will have Governor Emerson Kingi speak about aggressive issue of plotting.
So, na fikiri, governor, manzamo bezungumza koso mashamba, wa kichachi. Na fikiri, ukiwa se mhiya olimwe, na onataka pengene ku nuuwa shamba kuleyubani. Manzo kabisa, ni vizuri kutumia wa kili. Manake si kuhizi ku na kualanguziwengiwa mashamba. Ni kito baktu na taka ni watahadari. Licha ni nyagomo ku huku mbali na Kenya, hata sisa mo tunaishi pale pale Kenya. Tena wakatingwe gina ku hadaiwa na hama kualan. Wa yivo kuno muhimu, kuno muhimu kutumia wa kili. Manake wa kili ni mto ambaye fundishwa ginsy ya xeriya znuu kusu mashamba. Manzo kabisa eh ataina katika wizara ama katika registry, ana fanya uchunguzi le tuka ita sach. Atapata certificate of such, adue mo nyashamba yula napuzya kweyi nelaaki. Ana fuliwa ana fanya mambo yama kubaliano, na onatia sahii, na napata shamba amoli kosafe. Xida ni kwamba, hata nikalipata hili shamba, pengene bada miziki. Chachi, ikipita, utapata ya mambe pameya pale. Kusama kweyi swana hili, ama xida hila patikana kila sehemu ya inchetu. Swana na uskota, kususa nukua poani. Na fikiri, ikiwa ku na apahana moko na xida kuba ya uskota ni sehemu ya poani. Lakini tumenyaribu viliyo, wa kisha kwamba tumezungumza na watueto. Wa kwa kwamba, shamba ana amalu ni nachete chakumili ki arabi, ni shamba lakibinasi. Na ni kinyume cheriya ikiwa mto ata pameya lida shamba na adiyenge pale. Lakini, ikiwa ku huku nuu na shambalako ni vizuri manzu, uweke itulako pale. Ikiwa ni nubu yapo, ni familia yapo, mto ambaye ata kujuzi mara pa mara. Vida shambalako ginadelea, lakini usenunuwe, ana fu ujedadas ukaya huku. Ukiyoazzi kwamba mianakumi, ikipita, ukefiko tapata shamba liko pale. Utashanga sana, manake, manake wa Kenya, wa nakupe na mashamba nikama inza nakupe na kidoni. Wa yivo ni vizuri kutumia ya mize to moko akonyubani kuli, wa kisha kwamba mechunga valietu. Xeriya iko kweyo, lakini wa Kenya, wa kiona kukoaazi. Wana urahisi sana wa kuingya pale. Wa yivo, ukinuwa shamba, haki shakwombo kama cho yapo, na kuangalia, hili shambalile, hisa familia.
Because I do know that there is a life feed going in Kenya. Even in Washington, actually. We are appealing to you, all of you who are here, to work with us. We do have an event, East Africa Chamber of Commerce, a big event in October. Join in, invite your governors to come in. Because once they leave Kenya and come here, they are no longer court, they are no longer Jubilee, they are simply Kenyans, and this is how we would like to finish. Thank you very much, all for coming in. I will have our Prime Minister give some closing remarks, and then Mr. Kapten, you can come on. Thank you very much, Mr. Prime Minister.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think you found it very enlightening, isn't it?
Yes.
I want to thank those who had the opportunity to ask, and those who responded. There are few questions that I just want to respond to. A lady there asked about education. And we had a very comprehensive program on education. Jubilee has a program on education. Because you cannot actually hope to pull Kenya where it is, to a middle-income economy, without directing a lot of resources in manpower development. That is true at every level, at from the nursery, primary, secondary education, and also adult education, to empower our people, so that they can be able to participate more meaningfully and effectively in nation building. We, in court, we said, we wanted to introduce free primary and free secondary education. And they're saying that free is free, so that it's not as free, but parents still have to pay money for uniforms, for textbooks, and so on and so forth. They say that all those expenses should be actually taken up by the government. Now, there is this issue of laptops. Nobody possesses laptops. I think we must be understood properly. We say that we must embrace technology, and we must introduce it in our education system. But it needs to be done in a very systematic manner, the way they did it here in this country. Bill Clinton said, in computer in American schools, he set up a task force, Information Infrastructure Advisory Council, which hired a consultancy firm to work out how much it was going to cost the American taxpayer to introduce it in American schools. So they knew it. But you're saying that Jubilee has not done it. This was just a campaign gimmick. Free, I mean laptop for every San Juan child going to school. The question will ask us, how is that going to benefit San Juan going to school with a laptop? The teacher has not seen a laptop. He is going to teach this, this child, he is going to take the child, and he gives San Juan, so the eight has not seen a laptop. So it's upside down. He said, first, put the framework there. We have programs to have a computer laboratory in each and every school, primary and high school. So that the children have computer lessons, and they rotate. The teacher must first be taught computer, that they are IT kids. Then the teacher will be able to teach the children. Because he wants also to come up with proper software, which is exciting, interesting for schoolchildren. Otherwise, you come one software, and you go through this, and then it becomes very boring for them. And they forget about it. The teacher is the one who must make it more exciting for them. So he said, this is upside down. That's all that we have said, and we ask them to go back to the drawing board. The issue of voting system, we have said that we need to uphold our voting system. There's need for further improvement. But before you can get there, we need to also uphold our own electoral commission. Because the electoral commission is inefficient, is corrupt. That's why they are responding for their message that we now see. After these last elections, there are so many petitions. And the things which are coming out, these petitions, are actually indiscrebable. You can't imagine that they have been happened. Returning officer coming before the court and confessing that I slept, that's why you miscounted the votes. Some people say that, oh, you did not, if you called, you did not protect the votes. It is not the responsibility of a political party to protect the votes. That's the work of electoral commission. That's why you talk about free and fair elections. So now, they have been unable to publish the results of last elections. They have been demanding it for the last three months. Last week, they came up with a report, they tabled it. When the chairman was asked to carry the Quran and swear, they refused. And what did he say? That as a Muslim, when you are fasting, they don't allow you to lie. So yes, there are a lot of proposals to come up with a electoral system that is more representative, that ensures that every vote actually counts. And this debate is ongoing in our country, which is healthy. And we hope that we are going to be able to do it before we go back to elections next time. The diaspora. Because of the incompetence of this electoral commission, the diaspora was actually denied the right to participate in last elections. Because they were given everything, money, even tour, they came around here, did they come? Talking to Kenyans, saying they were putting the infrastructure in place to empower Kenyans to vote. But somehow, somewhere else, they changed their minds. And I'm sure I know how they changed their mind. Because they were not sure how the diaspora was going to vote. That's why they deliberately said franchise diaspora vote. So we are saying that the arrangement must be made now. They begin to put the infrastructure in place, to ensure that the diaspora next time around will be allowed to participate in the elections. Of course, diaspora is a very important component of our community. The remitance that's coming from the diaspora is very huge. It's contributing to economic development in our country. It's a very important thought. It is only not, we want your money, but now we don't want you to vote. And they said, no taxation without representation. This is very, very crucial, very, very important. So, and then you see, you need to, you have to engage the diaspora. I hired Mr. John Mayena as the diaspora representative officer. Because Mayena lived in this country for a long time. He was in Washington DC, he was in Baltimore, he was in Boston. So any of the people live in this country. Now, another one has been appointed, I don't know where it's going to go to. But what's important is to say that the diaspora need to be factored in, and we are going to push and show that this actually happens. There was another question about national cohesion to unite Kenya, a lady talked there. Yes, the fact that Kenyans are divided politically is not a big deal. What is a big deal is that Kenyans are divided ethnically. That is the disease that we must cure in our country. That's what we must cure, because even this country, you got the Republicans and Democrats. So it's not okay. That's fine, that's healthy. So if you're a member of Jubilee and a member of court, that's not a big issue. But to say that, oh, I am this tribe, and therefore must be in this party, that is not right. That is the big issue. And ethnicity is the disease of the elite. They lead in their competition for resources in the country, and they want to resort to ethnicity. That when he's being cornered somewhere, oh, my community is being finished. Since Namaliso was us. Since Yiruwa was it, Namaliso. But they're the ones who surround the leadership with themselves and try to exclude their and others. So it must be a game of inclusion. Like when you are talking about merit. Meritocracy can be pushed to a certain level that is used to discriminate against others. If you're going to appoint a cabinet, they say the cabinet is technocrats. Look at technocrats. It must also be representative in as far as ethnic groups are concerned. So that you come up with quotas that they have done in Malaysia. In Malaysia, they know the percentages of various communities. If they run, they put 110, 100 police officers. They know so many will be Malays, so many will be Chinese, so many will be Indians, so many will be this and this other community. So that if you're looking for merit, you must be merit in that community. So if this is a kisik water, if they're kissing, there must be somebody who are qualified. But they don't just say, look at the cabinet. They are all professionals, but they prefer to win communities. If it is 60% of the cabinet are from two communities, out of 42, is that representative?
No.
So that is what we must deal with. Don't drink water and drink water. You must do it like this, because all Kenyans actually pay taxes. All Kenyans pay taxes, this is the most important thing. So we have a solution to the issue of ethnicity, except that we have not been applying it. We must unite our people. That's why right now we are saying, if you respect your imperfections, we must now move Kenya forward, must move on, and all Kenyan communities must work together as one people in the best interest of our country. Was I an equal partner? Yes. We signed an accord, which was entrenched in the constitution, which talked of equal power sharing. That's why Kibaki appointed 20 ministers and I appointed 20 ministers. I appointed 20 assistant ministers and I appointed 20 assistant ministers. And we run the government as a grand coalition government of two equal partners. Except that we could not be two heads of states. So he was the president, and I was the prime minister. But a prime minister who must be consulted in all appointments, all constitution appointments. And that's why, in retirement, we must be treated equally. Thank you, Asante Nisam.
Thank you again, Your Excellency, Mr. Prime Minister. You know, I do have a bias, and everybody will have to excuse me, because I have a very good friend of mine, who I met here. Now, in my view, this is a language that I should have known, could have known, but was unable to. But I always like the ring of how it sounds. I'm going to put her on the spot, I'm going to ask her just to say something in nothing but my most favorite language, Mama Oga. Uh, Bi, Bi, how do you say? Biwa. I am going to, she's a good friend of mine, very religious. She is going to honor us with a prayer, in my favorite language, Dodoro. I don't speak Dodoro, but I think it sounds very good. She attends all my functions. In the meantime, I am going to ask Mr. Kapten to come and give a vote of thanks. And the other thing is, we do have a Kenyan author. His name is Ooko John. I would encourage you to look up his book. It's called Reflecting on America's First Black President. Author John Ooko is here, and he will be presenting a copy of this book to each governor. So, he's going to be presenting a copy of this book to each governor. I will have Mr. Kapten, please come up. The next voice that you hear, after Mr. Kapten, is a voice of prayer from my very good friend, Mrs. Oga. Mrs. Oga, you know...